This way and then pop five me straight up and curve right to the mid, so tippy in the forehead and I woke up a minute later. What happened? Lessons learned about.
Oh yeah. Or don't turn your heck with it here.
That's good.
Yeah. You may hit ball and you still want to go chase balls and get it and throw it. So it's a two do, wrong team over the top team that you're, yeah, or if they're empty, you feel down the radio house. So I'll be out of.
I don't know, so younger the order of things, the fun they are.
Yes, it's right. Back here by sir. All right, so those, yeah.
Don't start him to make it except on the shoot.
So nothing to business, but yeah. If any city business has to be discussed. Of the. Cause we can reach that term.
It's too young.
Three teams.
How good, I've asked you. We've lost, you know, sure. Yeah. This week is.
Great, it seems like Saturday. Sports festival. My son has.
Yeah, I turned up at clean little soccer practice yesterday. I stopped running. Yeah, this.
So you're saying on seven, you're the grandson. That's what I would.
Yeah, it's true, too. You don't have to go tell you. Oh, this is. See.
I'd like to. We just shouldn't talk so much. So he may work at the institute.
I know, I know. Worked for. I got a need.
It's supposed to be the local honey every day.
Say again?
Be local honey every day. But raw honeys. And you're supposed to make your allergy pad up, yep, because then you're like half a meeting consult to the bowens.
Right.
Slowly.
Yeah, thank you.
But don't try it with them. A metal spoon. Do it with a plastic spoon because the metal in the, in the ramen.
Little bit.
It'll, it'll kill it.
Thank you.
It, it, it should help.
I, I, I'll, I'll try anything. Thank you.
Just take the bottle and squirt it in your mouth. Okay. Before you take that, try to buy that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's what.
What the? That's against.
She's like, yes, like. Straight. It's more than. So we're very, we're sunny. Yeah. She heard that. I had a reason.
Uh, no.
I can just go.
Oh, okay. Fair enough.
Let's see what's.
So if you're.
Right?
I can all, I'll see what they just want to do.
No.
Okay. I might add chime in. Once we need more.
Yes, 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 so.
You said. I can't say. She's like. But I think she will give. Yeah, but she's not just. The, um, it's a lead to this. Oh wow. Hmm. Oh. I have since been doing. I wish I didn't. I. It's so terrible. You see, can you change that such that. Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, while I have. So I do it. So it's, uh, looking for now is. We don't talk. But they have also in the office. I want to handle it. You know, being. It's. They go. And so if you know, Jay, I have that. I've seen some stuff on Facebook about people who's working. If you know, Jay, that. You know, I probably. I'm ready to. I got like a smear in this. Can you, but picture.
Ladies and gentlemen, council of inches, welcome to the expense. In council workshop session is seven oh one on June fourth, twenty twenty five. We are going to start. Thing we do is a call to order. Sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading right now. Start the meeting, uh, first thing to give a pledge of allegiance, please. Happy. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And consider brother work, which is chance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine and justice for all. Thank you very much. Let's do a roll call, start at the left, please. Audrey, get us.
Here.
Patrick, right?
Here.
Ryan, why you just here? And Jessica, this.
Yeah.
All presence. All right, I'm assuming everybody already knows why they were called come here. There are currently, I've seen four. Four residents that apply and have got applications in here right now.
We have five candidates. Beyond was not able to attend. She sent a letter. It's a packing. She wanted to be here either in person or in teams. But she sent a letter to the council's consideration. So we have boarding interview, a letter to consider. Um, this is a work session, which means there's no motions, there's no votes. Public camp, but this is a work session. Council to interview candidates. Um, you have two vacancies, they're both four year terms. Uh, you can, you can't point them all because you've only got two chairs, but, but really, you know, you can do whatever you want. As it relates to, uh, choosing candidates, not choosing candidates. But tonight, there's no choosing involved. That's what happens all night. Council meeting. So no, no motions.
I mean. I have one question, one more to think. I believe in our charter, I believe I did wrong here. Um, whoever we appoint will not be for you to, they will be up for election in November of twenty twenty six.
You may, you may be very correct on that, sir.
So, so I don't think it's, I think, you know, I think.
It's for your terms, but I think our, our charter states that if they get appointed, they have to run for the second half.
Yeah, yes.
At the next general election.
Yeah, that's common. Yes, sir. And then, um. I, I don't know how like private this is, I don't know how. The person who was not able to attend, is that in? Do we have any idea if that's going to be? It would have hidden them being here regularly in future?
Early in the council's discretion as to how they wish to handle the candidate who was not able to attend.
Thank you, sir.
Was she able to attend by teams, you said?
Yeah.
She was not.
Not, okay.
We offered.
Does everybody is aware there are two positions to fill? We have the applications front us, we have reviewed several times. And now we can open the table for discussion. On council applications. It's council ready to ask the questions.
Are we doing? Sorry, are we doing one at a time, like calling them up, or are we just gonna have them just sit where they are and answer questions?
Chop. I think we should go come up one at a time. Get their advice too, so hit the public guy all the time and actually ask some questions to individuals who've been answered yet.
Okay, sounds good.
Great. Thank you very much. I am going to make it fair, just go by the first one that's on the list here. James, if you please come up, introduce yourself.
So, okay, cool. I'm James, uh, cool. I moved here about, uh, two years ago, married my wife, who's been here for seventeen plus years. So, uh, my high school sweetheart from twenty five years ago. So it's kind of cool, been moving to a small town. Yeah. That's great.
All right, if you don't want, I'm gonna skip straight to questions. I'm gonna ask the same questions to each candidate to make fair. And just gonna take notes with your answers. Much. So the first one. Who make our council more diverse and representative, do you ask?
I think I was thinking about it when I submitted my application to you. We can have though, or two weeks ago, three. Um, but I thought it'd be pretty cool to go around to the community and introduce myself, like if I got the position. Introduce myself and find out what our community's concerns are with neighborhoods, what they'd like to see going forth. Things to make our community more tight, a bigger family instead of some of us only representing one side of it and not getting the scope from. Yes.
Good. Uh, next question is, why are you interested in fulfilling the role and responsibilities that are remaining term? But next vote has a jury city councillor.
Um, one of my biggest things since moving here, uh, has been. The, uh, speed limit that comes into the town goes from fifty five on the. The far side down there, right to twenty five and seeing my kindergartner get off the school bus and people plow right through that. Twenty five mile an hour sign is kind of scary. Kind of have to make myself step in front once I see them slowing down, but kind of block the path so my kid can get off the bus safely, so. That probably was my biggest thing, when my wife told me that there were two open spots available and thought. There's something that we can do as a, a community. I know you told me about, uh, uh. Some of the roads are county roads and things like that. I don't want to see, and my kid, let alone anybody else's family member get hurt from anything, so. That's one of my biggest reasons for doing it.
Thank you very much. Next question. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing our community right now?
Uh, probably some of the biggest challenges is the diverse, um. Ethnic background from everybody. Um. I'd say not everybody is very open with each other. I've got a. I like to say, like to talk to all my neighbors that are around my house and whatnot, because they play with my kid quite a bit, and so. We develop a friendship and somebody's even gonna come over and mow my lawns. I haven't done in a while, so they offered it to do that and talking to. Everybody, but I, I think the communication would probably be the biggest thing to focus on. In the community. Get them more involved in everything. Not only just family activities, but probably want their community to run.
Thank you. Next question I have. What specific policies or initiatives would you champion to address those challenges?
Hmm, I guess I haven't had time to look at all the policies and, um, things like that. I'd have to get my feet wet, but I'm prepared for that challenge. Um. I'd probably look into all the things related to the one area that I was looking into. For like the speed and stuff, find out what initiatives are out there that we can and cannot do. Or we'll work around to get approval from outside the our area. So.
Okay. Thank you, James. Next question I have. The signatures has previously stated that they are anticipating the future. What do you see as it relates to future growth of our community?
I mean, future group growth, there's been quite a few, uh, neighborhoods come into the area within the last year, uh, over by where I live. Um, so the growth of everybody moving in, um. The growth of everybody attending our schools and actually coming to the council meetings. Um. I think that's a. A big area to focus on.
Good. Thank you. Next question, if you assume our current population is approximately twenty eight hundred, twenty twenty five, what would you like to see population be in ten years, twenty thirty five?
Uh, I'd like to see the small community keep growing, so I mean, however big it would like to grow. With. How our schools function and things like that, we don't want it to. Have to grow, but I don't want to see it on the, the news like we can't handle the workload in our community. It just gets too out of control. So I guess we'd have to see as it progresses and people with the developments that are moving in and get closer and closer to the jervis.
Next question. What specific skills that do you have to offer in your volunteer capacity as a city councillor for the city jurors?
One of my best skills is my ability to listen to everybody, uh, in my current job, working at Best Buy through the Geek Squad. I deal with hundreds of people on a daily basis about their concerns, not only with their devices, but it ends up. They build a rapport with me and end up talking about personal stuff. So sometimes I'm there to. Have their back and support them and tell them everything will be okay. Other times, you know, it's giving people the bad news about their devices and things like that. Sometimes I just take them in and. Willingness just to take care of them, not even charge them to worry about if they got hacked or not on their device.
Thank you. Next question I have. If you were granted authority to spend a hundred dollars. Of public funds to the right, various city departments, how would you distribute the hundred dollars?
I'd probably have to look at which ones go to the appropriate funds. I used to, uh, appropriate funds when I used to serve on the Fred, uh, Ben Meyer Foundation Board. Uh, granting grants and things like that, so we hear everybody's cases and try to. Select people for different grants and things from the funds that came in. So I got to see which ones met or. Felt like they needed more help at this time.
Thank you, yes, sir. Next question, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
Uh, one, like I said, I'd like to get out and go to everybody's house and knock on the door and introduce myself. Um. I wouldn't class myself as bilingual, but I know enough to get in the trouble, so I, uh. Talked about bringing around one of my coworkers that speaks quite a few fluent languages and, uh. So that way they knew we were listening and not just there to show up, but actually gather input from them.
And the last question. What is your approach to handling controversy, controversial and complicated issues, whether it be with council or residents?
To cover that, I would say I've got an open mind, so I can listen to both sides of the story, whether it's in the council. Or a neighborhood squad or whatnot, try to take both sides and not side with one side or the other, but try to come together. Figure out what, what works best for either the council and the community or to help out the individuals with the question, I guess I play.
Thank you very much, James. That is actually the last question I have for you, uh, to be fair, do you have any questions for the council?
No, not really. Glad to be here, even if I don't get it, I'd be. My, I tend to rest on people and interesting.
Shavuot. Yeah. Well, thank you for coming tonight, thank you for the interview.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the verses, verses. Think, think about the questions now that you got to move on.
And then I'll be like, oh, they got a better answer.
I'm going fair, I'll bite the lips, sorry. All right, the next person we'd like to interview, please, is, uh, Merro, Merro is us. Please go up and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Marty Vettel, and I've lived here for three, thirty five plus years. We live here, my dad graduated from here, my kids graduated from here, all four of them. This is my town. This is our town, just my, our town, everything.
Thank you for joining us, and we will start with questions, first one, same as before. How can we make our council more diverse and representative, representative of our, our current community?
Open minded. We need to put together. All of us, not just one thing, one thing and, you know, turn around and do another, but we need to stick together and. Be. Firm, that's how we want to be that here.
Thank you. And the next one is, why are you interested in fulfilling the role and responsibility of the remaining term as a juror city councillor?
Challenge. But, um. I would come with my dad and I would see how everybody would interact. So it would be interesting something for me to do for our community, not just the community, our community to come together.
Thank you. Next question. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing our community right now?
Not being one community. The way it was. A long time. Everybody has their own little. I'm not gonna say clique, but everybody has their own views. But it wasn't one community, you could say, hey, you know, say hi to all the neighbors. And not be judged by who you were, what you looked like, or what you spoke. It, that means a lot. We lived off, we live off the first street. And I can tell you, all the neighbors that live around us, because we all communicate. And that's what I like about. There was, it was one whole. That we all mesh together, not be, oh, that one, oh, that one, no. That's not what we're for. We're together. We're. Family. That's what it's for. It's family.
And that's a question I have for you. What specific policies or initiatives would you champion to address those challenges?
Tell me, and we're here for you, for you to listen, come to the meetings, give your opinion, that way. We know. They need to know what's going on, and we need to listen to them. What their. Challenges are. What their opinions are, they need to be counted to. Be all. Not to say, oh, yeah, I spoke my mind, but nobody listened. So we need to be one. And have everybody come together and listen and have everybody come to the meetings to say what they need to say.
Thank you very much. Next question. The city of jurors has previously stated that they are anticipating the future. What do you see as it relates to the future growth of our community?
I like it small. I do, I like our small community. It's always been. Family. And I go back to family because that's what jervis is. It. Everybody knows each other at the high school, everybody knows each other from the middle school and the grade school, and they come together. You know, my kids still come to the high, high school and they're thirty five years old and they still go to the school and say, oh, hi, you know, Mr. And Mrs. Whatever. And that's what I like, and they still remember the kids. My dad still goes to the school and says, oh, yeah, I remember what I, I like it too. You know, it's. Homey community, that's what I like about it. I don't like it too big. Sometimes too big's out of your comfort zone, no. I like it.
Thank you very much, and yes, your father did show us his original locker over there.
Oh, God.
Back in the ice ages.
Back then, yeah.
Uh, if you assume our current population is twenty eight hundred approximately, what would you like to see our population be in approximately ten years?
I'd like to say the same as it is now, late. I don't wanna say be one of those people that say, oh, the bigger the better, no. Why fix it if it's not broken? I like the school system, I like our town. You can walk into any store, I mean, the store is down here, they know you. You can walk anywhere, I, I don't like it, true. I mean, a little bit, yeah, but not that much. But I like our community. That's. Family.
Thank you, community. Thank you. Next question, what specific skill sets do you have to offer in your volunteer capacity as a city councillor for the city of jurors?
I believe. Believe what I like to go out there, I like to talk. I love to talk. It might not be. Always what they want to hear. But I know I could listen very well and take it in, to depend, not depending on what they want to say or how they want to say it. But we're open minded and speak to both. English and Spanish. I wish I spoke Russian, to speak to the Russian community. But good enough that we can listen to everybody, that I would listen and see where we could come together.
Next question, if you were granted authority to spend a hundred dollars of public funds to the various city departments, how would you distribute the hundred dollars?
Uh, it would probably go to the park, make more stuff available for the kids to play with and have fun. And the other one would go to the, the city, the water, so they could decorate the the main way in Douglas more, maybe, yeah, and going out towards Bureau.
You said water?
Yeah, for the, for the, um,
For the pots?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
That's okay. I mean, we have some coming in on Douglas, but I don't see any going out towards Bureau. I mean, or even decorate the ones that's coming out of, coming out from Bureau to Jervis. Decorate that part. For instance, Welcome to Jervis, that needs to be decorated too. Sometimes we forget about it, but I know.
Next question, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
Yeah, even if it's a city, I mean, that's part, or going around talking to people. You know, they, well, nobody invited us because we didn't know. No, it's just sometimes they don't know. They don't know, even if it's like a little, you can get a block together or so many blocks together and say, we're having this, we need to get together. We need, you know, so you think to have things in your opinion. You would section that off.
Thank you. And the last question, what is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues within the council and with residents?
Communication. Talk it out, listen to both sides. But I don't like being bullied. I know, I know, it's, it's probably been from watching the Hispanics being bullied. We need to listen. I don't get bullied. My kid, no, that's, that's not what happens. Jervis is not about being bullied. We talk it out and we listen. If we can come to agreement for everybody, not just one side, but both sides. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up tonight. That was the last question. We appreciate you being, thank you. You have one more?
Oh, hold on, you're done.
Oh. One more. To be fair, do you have any questions for the council?
No, I don't.
No, you don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth. Um, I built my house here at Jervis back in two thousand eleven with the USDA Home Bill Program. Worked nine months to build nine homes in the community. Uh, it was a fabulous program. In the time, the nine months I was building, I got to know all my neighbors. The nine homes that we were building specifically really well. We helped each other build our homes. So we had lunches together. Um, I'm still pretty tight with the seven that are left who moved. Um, I watched the park be built. I listened to the speaking machine out there every morning at eight AM when they were out there building our mind at the St. Park. That was great. It was beautiful. So I've been here before the park was built, before Dollar General came in. Um, yeah, I've been here a while and I really enjoy it. I'm really glad I got to be out here and a part of that program and be here in Jervis. I really enjoy it. Um, moving from a big city, a group of Portland, St. Louis, and Long Island.
So your, on your application, it says twenty sixteen?
Code twenty, no.
Uh, uh, you want, you want?
Maybe you're too old for it. I don't know. It's two thousand sixteen, but I've been here a long time.
All right, well, if you don't mind, Elizabeth, let's get started. First question, how can we make our councils more diverse and representative of the community?
Well, I mean, to make it more diversity, we need people from other cultures to be on the panel, um, which unfortunately we don't have yet, but hopefully, you know, we could have Hispanics, it'd be great. We have quite a few of those in our community as well as Russians, um, which is kind of sad because a lot of, like she said, they don't, they don't know. They don't know what meetings are. They don't know when festivals are happening. Um, they're just kind of left out of the communication mode, which is sad, but, you know, if they're not on our board, then we need to reach out to them.
Next question, why are you interested in fulfilling the role and responsibilities of the remaining years for term as a Jervis City Councilor?
Uh, I think that Jervis has a lot of room for improvements. Um, I hope to bring in new fresh ideas. Just, I'm full of them. Doesn't mean they're good or bad, but I have a lot, so why not hear them?
Next question, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing our community right now?
Business stagnation. We, we don't have any businesses. We lost, uh, Iber Fab or Valley Fab, or as it's called over there. And Dollar General came in, thank goodness, but other than that, we, we have nothing. Uh, we need to find a way to bring businesses here because if you bring businesses here, people follow, the money follows, it offers jobs, it brings more income for the city. That, I feel is our biggest problem besides, you know, communication and not maybe bringing in a more diverse people into our meetings. That's, I feel like that's our biggest one. We need more businesses.
Thank you. Next question, what specific policies or initiatives would you champion to address those challenges?
Um, our city planning, that's one thing that we don't, I guess, have. We don't have a city planner. Um, so that would be something to address.
Thank you.
I feel like that's a big responsibility from the council.
Actually, those discussions are being made already. Thank you. City of Jervis has previously stated they are anticipating the future. What do you see as it relates to future growth in our community?
I hate seeing the urban sprawl of Woodburn at the moment. I see that we're like two fields away from becoming Woodburn. That kind of scares me. I would like to see, you know, a, a boundary and keep some of that farm land would be great. I do like our, our small town feel as well. Um, you know, I hate to see us grow too big. Again, want us to be like Woodburn where they have hundreds of new homes coming in. They don't have, as new school planned. They don't have another grocery store planned. I mean, I don't like going to Walmart on Sunday. I don't know why they're asking all that. It's crazy. So just making sure that we are, even if we're going to stay small, we still need to plan for that future. Making sure that we have enough resources.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And the next question, if you assume our current population is approximately twenty-eight hundred, twenty-two-five, what would you like to see our population be in ten years?
I'm with, I like the smaller town feel as well. Um, you know, I do feel like we have an opportunity to be a little bit more like St. Paul or a little bit more like Mount Angel. They still have the small town feel, but they still have a lot more growth than we have.
Thank you very much. So not people too?
Yeah, uh-huh. I think we could probably learn a lot from collaborating with other cities that have started out small and grown, but still kept that small town feel. I love St. Paul, I'm going to go to Boston, I'm excited.
First time.
Yeah, I know, I've been here.
Next question. What specific skill sets do you have to offer in your volunteer capacity as a city councillor for the city of Jervis?
I do like to liaison. I'm a problem solver. Um, I do like to communicate with my neighbors. Even though we don't speak the same language, uh, if there's something going on in the park and I know that they're not aware of it, I'm going to go knock on the door. And I'm going to find a way to let them know. When we had the cleanup, they had no clue. And so I had to get somebody over to translate and let them know, we, we could take your trash for free. And they said, our trash for free? And so we loaded up my trailer again and brought it out. So, um, I like to lend a helping hand. Um, I like to have fun in whatever we're doing. I like to volunteer for when we do the fourth of July, it's fun. I love the kids. I think all the kids here are fantastic. I love hearing them outside playing. And, um, I, I like to go, you know, cheer them on their soccer game when they're, oh, you know, after a little while, I'm going to shut my door when I need some peace and quiet. But for the most part, um, kids will talk to me too. I'm, I'm a very open person. They will just come to me if they need help. They get hurt. So, um, just being open and honest and just letting people know that you're there, I think, makes a big difference.
Thank you. And next question, careful as is if you were granted authority to spend a hundred dollars of public funds to the various city departments, how would you distribute the hundred dollars?
Well, just to do, you know, rely on who's going to need it the most. Um, you know, if I have five neighbors and the one neighbor eats eggs more than the neighbor that already has three eggs, then I'm going to give the neighbor with eggs and egg. So it just depends on who needs it the most, but how I would allocate it. Um, and for our city, I do feel like the, the parks is a big one because they do need use a lot. Um, I know the splash pad is always broken every year, so that would be a place where we would want to possibly allocate a little bit more money. And then, you know, you've got your police department and the water department. So, you know, public safety is also a big key factor too. So just making sure you're allocating it, again, to who's going to need it the most. I didn't tell you that I'm going to give, you know, fifty dollars here and sixty dollars there. I'd want to see who needs what. Yeah.
And next question, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
Letting them know we have things going on, like the meetings. Again, I'm, I'm pretty sure that some of them aren't even aware of when our city hall meetings are. Um, finding a way to meet our residents halfway. Let them know we have monitored you guys from watching on your home computers. Um, I think that if we send out notices possibly through the school, because a lot of kids take their backpacks home, hey, mom, with a thing in my backpack today. Um, if we're reaching out through those avenues or maybe a public bulletin board, where again, I'm meeting our residents halfway, whether it's a language barrier or a transportation issue. That's where we're going to hear more from our community.
Thank you very much. And the next question, what is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues in the council or with residents?
Uh, with a deep breath, with a smile, and with a sense of understanding. I think, um, if you are listening, but you're not understanding, then you're
And the last question, do you have any questions for the council?
Yeah, I think.
Thank you very much for showing up tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Here, so. Jervis, please come forward and introduce yourself. Are you enjoying the weather?
Yeah, some, some.
Go to the state to the council first and introduce yourself. There's one more question.
Just to start with questions and business.
Thank you very much. Okay, the first question, how can we make our council more diverse and representative of our community?
So for a while, I really liked seeing young people in community, being more active. So if we could get some younger people, and I would love to maybe start a program with the high school. Seniors, maybe that want to get involved in any public work, become and like shadow people and maybe help out a little bit and learn something and, you know, help out with the school too. And maybe get them interested, like Michael Johnson, the young kid he ran for city council. And then he didn't apply this time because he was getting a new job and was busy. But he would be a great asset because he's realtor, he's so bad, you know. So I think that that would be one of the things that I'd consider, isn't that one of my things?
Thank you very much. Second question, why are you interested in fulfilling the role and responsibility of the remaining term as a Jersey City Councilor?
I mean, um, well, I've worked here for thirteen years and I've done this twice already. When people have resigned and weren't able to fill their term. One time was for six months and one time was for four until reelection. And so I've helped out before. I've been here for thirteen years. And Jervis is bigger than we are, why, in thirteen years. And I'm looking at this as a community service. It was posted on Facebook that we needed help. And I'm here and I'm like, if you want my help, I'm willing to give it to you. And if you don't give it, I'm okay too.
And the next question, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing the community right now?
I, I feel that it's pretty much maxed out on population. I really do. The school system is the same school system that was there thirteen years ago. And I remember when we built the walnut, my kids had to get bused down to El Village over on River Road and Gouget Barocks and because the school was crowded and there wasn't enough room. And kids got bussed around for two years until they brought it all back into Jervis. Um, I would hate to see that happen again, really, because there's just not enough room in these schools. I know that they had a big school bond, but I don't know if that's going to be enough to provide more room in the schools. And when we build more houses, what has happened in the past, and I've seen it from this neighborhood. Uh, when we build new houses, what happens is families, they, they have kids and those kids have to go to school. We have to provide a place for that. And I'm not sure that our water system is really prepared to provide water for too many more people before we have a crisis and you're going to be able to provide for everybody if we need it. So, yeah, things happen.
Thank you. Sorry, my voice is going out. What specific policies or initiatives would you champion to address those issues?
I don't, sorry, I'm too much of a personal agenda. I would like to see Jervis improve. I think I talked to you last time, we spoke about paving the east side of First Street. Because there's a lot of kids right there on the corner of First and Douglas, allowing that to be kids walking home. And that corner, when we pull up to that corner to turn right or left, there's a green van that's parked there. There's a bunch of arborite. It's hard vision-wise. There's bushes over here and I worry about the kids. I'm so thankful that, I, I don't know who provided that flashing light for crossing, but that was like one of the best things that's happened in a while. And, um, I just worry about safety there. And I think that if the road was whitey, it would make it real safe for the kids. They would have sidewalk to walk on. Um, but I would like to see that on as many avenues as we could, you know, to improve Jervis' infrastructure, what we have now.
Thank you. And the next one, the city of Jervis has previously stated that they are anticipating the future. What do you see as it relates to future growth of our community?
Well, I've said, I agree with Martin's thoughts, brought public on Facebook, that I believe that at some point in the future, Jervis is going to be a sort of a river. They're getting so close and they're growing so big. They added five thousand apartments just recently. And because I work at the post office, I gave numbers in my head. A lot of new apartments and they're filling up. People are moving in. And, um, a lot of people are coming from Horton, down, want to get out of the city. And I, I'm concerned that Jervis is gonna grow, that it's gonna mesh. And, um, if we lose the post office, we're done. And, um, the post office is supported by the community. You know, it's, I know this, the United States Post Office, but it has to remain one. It's a business, it has to be able to support itself. So, uh, I do have that concern that we might end up disappearing monitored. We monitor, we used to have a post office and they lost their post office and they lost their zip code and monitors no longer. And everyone still calls it monitor, we all know it's a monitor, but their mailing addresses look like things are something. They're able to land, they're able to use. They just, they lost everything. They used to have a blue collection box out by the phone company, they lost that. The post office, the... I would hate to see that happen with Jervis. I mean, so growth is something that I'm not really excited about. So, you know, as far as, I'd like to kind of keep it about the same, we work on what we got and improve. Once, once everything's perfect now, then we can go for it.
Thank you. And the next question, what specific skill set do you have to offer in your volunteer capacities? Thank you for the catch. If you assume our current population is twenty eight hundred, twenty twenty five, what would you like to see our population be in ten years?
About the same. I think that we need to take care of what we have. Uh, uh, there's gonna be growth, there's no way we can stop it. It's inevitable, there's gonna be growth. So I think we need control.
Now on to, what specific skill set do you have to offer in your volunteer capacity as a city councillor for the city of Jervis?
Skills, well, I'm pretty organized, working at the post office, two leaders, I have some organizational skills. Um, I was a executive officer for ASME, the Union for State, County, and Municipal Envoys for six years. And city and law and court decorations, and investigations. So, um, I've had experience, you know, with a lot of people in stressful situations. And, um, I think that being that I've been here for thirteen years and I say, I can just offer... I would just talk to everybody and try to make it mesh. ASME, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Envoys. AFSCM. I also worked at the state mental hospital for about a year and that might help everything existing. Yes, never know, right? That might be a quality.
Thank you. Um, next question, if you were granted authority to spend a hundred dollars of public funds to the various city departments, how would you distribute the hundred dollars?
I would love to see the splash pad, I see on Facebook all the time, people are, you know, the flash, the flash. I've never seen it personally, I've never even gone over and I looked at it, but I heard about it, because it doesn't work. I'd like to see that. You know, thirteen, thirteen years, you know, I've heard, we need more things for kids. I totally agree, we need more things for kids. I don't know what those things are, because I'm not sure what kids' interests are today. But I would love to find out and see, because I know we had a video I played once over by the old police station over there. We've had some, two different little things in the state that are not in view. But, um, yeah, I would like to see some more, some things. I would, really, I thought we, they didn't get a swimming pool. They've enhanced, the school could use it for classes, swimming boxes, swimming boxes, picking up school things. But they also sell people in Jervis memberships, where we become an union, it's really, you know, it would be a fundraiser, you know, you've been, I think, out there for it. But the whole five in that building should become shop class for the kids. It's a, we still, we replace phones, we have well to work on cars and maybe as dental hygienist and, you know, I think that would be cool if that's another more available to the schools. In case they don't go to pubs.
Thank you. And what do you see as your two most significant goals, sorry, of that question?
You don't have your glasses on.
I, I can do it, I'm gonna put them on. I think you said, sorry. Okay, what do you plan to involve, or how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
A lot of people watch online, I think that it would be good to post email addresses for the people, I would make a new email address just for Jervis, you know, for people to be able to send emails and tell me what's on their mind, what they're concerned about. Um, I'm in a great, great, bright orange house over on First Street, it's kind of an eyesore, most people know where it's at. Um, but I'm welcome to talk to my neighbors and find out what, what they need, what's, what is interesting for them. Seven week, yeah, besides fixing the road, there, I don't have a whole lot of tumor, besides turning it around.
And next question, what is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues within the council or within residents?
Oh, well, you know, I've lost my temper once. I, uh, try real hard to voice my opinion, but I also put a lot of emphasis on trying to listen to yours. And I think that it's going to be a great asset that if you let me run my mouth, oh, 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 this is my opinion, I'll shut up and listen to yours. And I'm, I'm reasonable. And, um, if I can see things, real evidence, not make, not just talk, but real evidence, I'm very capable of reading the big decision.
Thank you very much. And the last question, do you have any questions for the council? I want to thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And for the agreement. And for awareness, I'm gonna go on a squirrel one here since we've brought up a couple times, the splash pad, it's known it's broken, it's known to break all the time.
It is probably all the time.
Back then, it did say stomp button, switch. So when you say the kids love to stomp it a lot harder than you think they should, so there's a possibility of trying to look at getting a chef button that comes up high so they can sit down without destroying it.
There's one in Lipper.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the main issue with the splash pad is it's going down, because the switch keeps working.
So like when kids run by it, it turns on?
Oh, that's, that's a good thing to bring in, because people can cover the things. That cat will walk by you.
That, that cat will learn its lesson.
Um, I, I, I guess I have a question for Rick. Um, and it's a question to the councillor, and we're trying to ask. How to handle the fifth candidate? We, we discussed that earlier, will we allow you to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, not so much that, it, it's, my take on it is, is the candidates seem qualified, but I don't feel like there's any way we can do anything with it. So we ask that person the same questions. And my question really is for our, our council is, do you want to find an opportunity? Give that person that opportunity or do you just wanna say, hey, you aren't here, sorry, it's not good? What, what do we want to do with that?
I believe you want to do what we did to members, be fair, and these same questions, you're gonna be fit out and something.
Is he gonna handle them, or is that a...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the, that's the, is, is, it's important to make this to tomorrow, that's, that's not what I'm trying to, I'm trying to answer. So, yeah, it's just a food thought, I don't know, I don't have an answer, I just, I don't know what to do with it.
I know she's probably mature, is why she could not join us on Teams tonight. We can try to reach out and see if we can ask for two sentence responses for each of the questions that the mayor asked tonight and see if they're back before your meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah, I love that, or another option we could look at, which I'm not sure, option A is, we could convene half an hour earlier, just give them...
It's, it's six, they fill one seat tomorrow night and keep one seat open and reconsider at a later date if you want to. Or you could take the position that she was unable to attend for just three. Okay, sarah, sarah. Or we could ask for written responses before the council meeting tomorrow night. What I did not ask and I wanted to was whether that should be available for an interview by Teams tomorrow night. I did not ask that question, and I shouldn't have. But, um, um, we can look at all the sets, or attend some council direction. Written, it should be available all night, appoint one tomorrow night, keep one seat open to consider her, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to fill any seats tomorrow night, this is purely your choice. So, so, um, um, that, that's purely a council direction and staff will do their best to provide, uh, and, and take that guidance.
My, my preference, and please, I'll be there if you don't agree, um, is that we contact here with the opportunity to say, can you give her the option, you can either respond to two sentences each, or if you want to try to do this for half an hour before the meeting, either options to just give her the opportunity and if she doesn't make it, then we'll move on.
She tried my call too.
I do not know that, I should have asked, I did not.
All right, counsel a favor, try to reach out to her as soon as possible. And I, so we'd have a chance to actually review the grant. We at least get an answer back by email or someone, phone call by, say fourteen hundred tomorrow.
Oh, giving her the option, either or, we're saying, hey, well, wait.
I'd say that either, you're the option, so we can either meet half an hour early or see if she wants to answer her questions.
Or see if she can provide written responses.
Written responses.
Either one, except for...
Just get, give her the, give her a chance, you know, make it fair.
Well done.
Counsel.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Gladly.
But also just think, this is, this is, this, this whole thing is, it's a lot. And, and as Tracy alluded to, it's not always, you get to be part of the record set, fun. Um, I appreciate you coming, you're fine now, it's great, thank you.
And it is a volunteer position, so we can just, both praise people who've been given here, again, Austin, we agree here. Gotta stay positive for the city, it's for the good of the community all the way around. Definitely, thank you very much for having me tonight, to prepare meetings.
Thank you, happy to give back, Jervis did a good job. Always want to give back where we can.
It's seven fifty-seven and this council board session is adjourned. Thank you very much. Lisa. I can see a situation from you.
Just like, I have to give up the budget committee, no, I'm good.
She didn't have to know, she's a woman.
Yeah. I hadn't moved out the whole month. Sure, do we come in? Yeah.
I don't know.
Oh, you've never seen it?
Bowing?
I saw your ego. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for our twenty one year, first, uh, presidency, I spoke here and we got some span, I'll get it.
Love bragging, bragging, it's a, it's a, we have time.
Okay, so that's me in line, I'm saying line people.
So I was supposed to go last year and I served it and my, my show was the one show that he had sold. See, my kids, my parents are gonna go and...
It's totally worth it.
It'll happen eventually.
Totally worth it. And see it here in some ways, I felt was kind of even better than we, we saw it abroad.
We saw so. So that's, I don't know how, how it is.